On behalf of the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners, or not, but Board of County Commissioners, of the Johnson County Public Policy Council, I welcome you to this candidate forum. And today we'll be having candidates for the fourth district of the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mike Hockley. I'm the Chair of the Public Policy and Ethics Committee for the Oval Park Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a partner with Spencer Fain where I practice environmental law. Thank you all for showing up. This is one of the bigger audiences I've seen in person because we stream these online, and I hope that they get it what I just said when they screen. So I want to thank also the Johnson County Public Policy Council for coordinating today's forum. The different chambers of commerce are taking turns doing these forums depending upon where the district is for the people running for office. So today's district is located wholly within Oval Park, so the Oval Park Chamber of Commerce is hosting this one. In addition to hosting forums like this, the Public Policy Council also does other voter education efforts, and it includes publishing a wealth of information on a website called I want to introduce our candidates first. To my far left is Maria Holliday. Maria has previously worked as a public school teacher, a preschool operator, and a small business owner. She has served on the Johnson County Public Art Commission and the Transportation Committee. Welcome, Maria. And on my immediate left is Janay Hanslick. Janay currently serves as the Board of County Commissioners, serving in the fourth district. She's a former CEO of Safe Home, an agency that's focused on combating domestic violence. She is a Leadership Oval Park graduate and a member of numerous community organizations and boards. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the format for today. Each of you will have two minutes to make an opening statement. And after opening comments, we'll rotate through the questions. So for the first, if you're the first person to speak in the opening statement, then you'll be the second person to get the question. And then for the next question, we'll just reverse the order. So each time you'll take turns answering the questions first. After opening comments, then we'll rotate through the questions that have been written by the Public Policy Council, and we'll get through as many questions as we can in the hour that's been allotted. The candidates will have up to two minutes to answer each question, and we will not be taking questions from the audience today, although this is one of the larger audiences I've seen at one of these forums. So thank you all for coming out. Because this is a forum and it's not a debate, we have not built in time for rebuttal. I'm going to remind the audience also that please refrain from reacting either for or against comments made by the candidates. And at the conclusion of the Q and A, we'll give each candidate one minute for closing remarks. So if you're the first person to speak in the opening remarks, then you'll be the last person to speak during closing remarks. So before we started the forum, we drew numbers to determine who would speak first. Based on this random drawing, and it indeed was random, I witnessed it, we'll begin with Maria Holliday to make her opening statement. Maria?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you to the Public Policy Council and the Oval Park Chamber for giving me this opportunity to share my vision for the county with the voters. My opponent and I are both longtime Johnson County residents. We both have nonprofit leadership experience, and we've both served on a variety of county boards. Both of us have been very active in our communities. Beyond these similar experiences, I have the added benefit of having been a public and private school teacher and a business owner here for 25 years. That unique combination of skills and experiences has led me to a different vision for our county that I look forward to discussing today. The need for a stronger business sense and just plain common sense on our county commission has become very apparent. The county budget has increased nearly $580 million to a $1.64 billion budget since my opponent was elected just four years ago. That equates to an $838 difference for every man, woman, and child in Johnson County. The last few years have been tough, but when county government could have been helpful, instead they've made things harder. We have a fundamentally different view of the role of government in our lives. While my opponent believes the government is in the best position to autonomously make decisions that end up affecting everyone, I believe we need a little humility in government. The reason is simple. Our community is strongest when constituents are able to make decisions that are best for themselves, their families, and their businesses. I'm here to share how we can harness the talent in our community and make sure that Johnson County is a safe and more affordable place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Janay?
Well, thank you, and thank you to the Oval Park Chamber and the Johnson County Public Policy Council for this opportunity today, and thank you, Mike Hockley, for being our emcee. I am Janay Hanslick, and I've had the privilege for the past four years as serving as the County Commissioner for District Four. I am a social worker by profession, and prior to running for office, I was the Director of Safe Home, Johnson County's domestic violence agency, where I oversaw a $4 million nonprofit business and a staff of about 80 people. In my 20 years at Safe Home, I worked very closely and successfully with law enforcement and community leaders to ensure public safety and to improve life-saving services in Johnson County. And I am very proud to be endorsed by four former Johnson County Police Chiefs. Johnson County is a great place to live, and I'm running for reelection to keep it that way. Johnson County is a world-class community with outstanding schools, parks, libraries, and businesses, as evidenced by our 98% satisfaction in our 2022 Community Citizen Survey. People and businesses don't move here to Johnson County because they want the bargain basement county. They understand that a community like ours depends on planning, commitment, and investment in things like Panasonic and those solar-scale utility facilities that bring jobs, additional businesses, and increased tax revenue. I love living in Johnson County, but our future depends on electing pro-business county leaders like me. I look forward to this afternoon's discussion.
Thank you both for your opening statements. Now we'll move to a series of questions, and the first question will go to Janay Hanslick. As a candidate, what are your top three priorities for Johnson County?
Well, thank you, Mike. I appreciate that question. As I said, there are so many great things about Johnson County, and some of my priorities involve keeping those things great, and others involve strengthening what we already have. My first priority is to continue to maintain our quality county services, like our parks and libraries, public safety, mental health, and aging services, not to mention ambulance service and fire services. By contrast, my opponent wants to slash funding for critical services, and in fact, she has criticized spending for senior services and suicide prevention education. I also, my second priority, is continuing our economic development. I mentioned Panasonic. I mentioned the solar-scale utility farms and facilities. Those are ways that we bring in more business, provide more jobs, and actually help reduce the property tax burden on our residents. Finally, and this is one that I am especially passionate about, is increasing our housing options here in Johnson County. We know that there is a shortage of housing at all levels, primarily and especially for those families that want to start a home and start a family in Johnson County. In fact, just last week, I was asked to serve as the co-chair, the Kansas co-chair, for the Regional Housing Partnership Committee for the metro area, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
No. Top three priorities. My top three priorities are number one, public safety; number two, controlling our budget; and number three, providing transparency. And public safety is job number one for our county. Crime is increasing in Johnson County, and mental health needs are skyrocketing. Public safety and mental health are directly linked. I'd like to address that later, but I'm certainly not in favor of decreasing mental health services. We are experiencing a crisis shortage of law enforcement, firefighters, and other first responders. I have been called an extremist by my opponent for supporting and for being endorsed by every living Johnson County sheriff. I believe putting the citizens at risk by not funding law enforcement is reckless. In fact, a recent poll showed that 77% of voters are opposed to the variety of defund-the-police initiatives being presented across the country, including my opponent's recommendation that we appoint rather than elect our sheriff, once again, sort of venting the voice of the people. We need to control our budget. I didn't say slash our budget. Controlling the budget does not mean reducing services. It means carefully evaluating spending to ensure that we're creating a budget that is both sustainable and accountable. I've talked to many seniors who are concerned that they'll have to give up their homes as a result of our increasing appetite for spending. They should not be being taxed out of their homes. My mother lives three blocks from me. We moved her to Johnson County because of the services in the Department of Aging, so I'm very supportive of those. But I also know that her house, her little tiny home, had a $150 increase in the mortgage as a result of property taxes.
All right. Now the next question will go to you again, Maria. What is your philosophy and approach to managing the county budget?
Well, part of managing the county budget is the transparency portion that I didn't get to a moment ago, but we really need to be evaluating all of our programs. Are we not taking a close look at where we are spending our dollars? Mental health is getting a huge portion of our budget, but we're, how are we measuring the effectiveness? Is it the increasing numbers that need these services? And if so, are the services, are they effective? I just want to take a look. I'm a doer, and I'm an entrepreneur, and I know how to critically think about the programs that we have in front of us and see if they are in fact operating efficiently and effectively. And if they're not, we need to pivot. We need to pivot to make sure that we are providing quality services that our residents expect and not just taxing them for things that are no longer working.
Oh, thank you. I'm proud to have voted to lower the county's mill levy for the past three years. The 2023 reduction of one full mill is the largest one-time reduction in about 20 years. I support a prudent county budget that balances the need to provide the services that our community expects, needs, and wants, and to maintain our triple-triple-A bond rating while also keeping property taxes as low and as equitable as possible. And I have voted for those mill levy reductions because I believe that increases in assessed valuations must be balanced with reductions in the county mill levy to ensure the property owners aren't unfairly penalized for the growth in their home's value. It is a very difficult balance. My opponent claims that she's going to lower your property taxes, but we've yet to hear how she plans to do that. What we have heard her say is that she doesn't understand how the county budget works, that it's too complicated for her. On the other hand, I do understand the county budget. As the pro-business candidate, I know that the best way to lower property taxes is to support an environment that attracts and retains growing businesses and educated workers. Unlike my opponent, I don't support spending taxpayer money to investigate unproven election fraud and conspiracy theories, or to make policy based on random internet searches.
Wow. All right. Please, no comments from the audience. If you want to make a comment, you can leave. This next question will go to you, Janay. There's been a lot of discussion about metro area regionalism. Please explain your views on regional cooperation.
Well, thank you for that question. The future of Johnson County is inextricably linked with the Kansas City metro area, and I want to point out particularly three ways that that is important. First, we saw that through the pandemic, when regional cooperation among health providers, governments, and businesses was critical to addressing and recovering from a pandemic. Secondly, public safety is a major reason for regional collaboration, including the interlinked 911 call centers, the uniform metro-wide radio system for law enforcement, which I did vote for and support, regional emergency preparedness plans, and metro-area homeland security collaboration. We cannot do those things alone in Johnson County. The third major area of importance for regional collaboration is economic development. The Mid-America Regional Council serves as our federally designated metropolitan planning organization, providing a conduit for regional federal transportation funding. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about how that works. It's because of them that we are able to be sure that we have highways that are appropriate, that are in good shape, and that cross all state and city and county boundaries. And more recently, it's our region, not just one city, that attracted the World Cup and continues to be a place where businesses choose to relocate. In my role as Commissioner, I have advanced regional collaboration through service on the Mid-America Regional Council Board, Kansas City Area Transportation Authority, Climate Action KC, and the Johnson County Transportation Council, and I look forward to continuing to support those regional collaborations.
Yes, I want to address the rolling back of the mill levy. Our budget is extensive, and while property taxes have gone up due to home values increasing, we could definitely lower our mill levy enough to give a, we should have a revenue-neutral budget, and we have exceeded that because we did not roll the mill levy back in order to attain that. Johnson County is part of a by-state Kansas City metro, and we do need to collaborate on things. However, we should not be beholden to the Kansas City, Missouri mayor, or out-of-state corporations, or corporations that are run by non-elected officials that provide grants that often have strings attached to them, that then, when the funding for those is gone, the taxpayer is then beholden with carrying those forward. Johnson County citizens should have input and buy-in to decisions that are made with their tax dollars and that affect their county. When we look back at the budget, and she's saying that it's, that I don't understand it, I haven't been a Commissioner for four years, but I have been a business owner for 25 years, and I know when things are convoluted when they don't have to be. There's a 444-page budget that you can delve into and come out with more questions than answers. If we could be more transparent, everybody in the county could understand where their tax dollars are going. We could use an easy application that has a line-by-line budget item, like Ohio Checkbook, for example. There's things that people don't understand. How could we spend 1% of a building fund for county art, but then it got reduced, so it's down to a half a million dollars for hanging balls? There's things we can do.
All right. This next question will go to you first, Maria. What do you believe the role of the county should be in economic development?
Johnson County is a great place to live, work, and play. It's so good that, she was talking about housing earlier, but you know, our inventory is increasing. It's increased 9.1% just in the last month. We have housing available, and we naturally attract these businesses because of the services that our county provides. We don't need a ton of tax incentives to have businesses that want to come here. The average home price right now is just under a half a million dollars in Johnson County. People come here because of what we have to offer and because they have businesses that can be successful here. I think we need to let the free market does, do what the free market does. We need to be here to support the infrastructure. We need clean water. We need good roads. We want nice parks. We want well-equipped libraries. But let's keep government doing what government is supposed to do and let business do what business is supposed to do.
Janay?
Thank you, Mike. Well, as the pro-business candidate, I recognize the county government does play a major role in ensuring the economic strength of our community. Providing amenities like parks and libraries and high-quality services that don't overburden taxpayers makes our county attractive to business and workers seeking to relocate. Businesses like Panasonic that choose to locate here help ease the tax burden on homeowners, provide jobs, and enrich the local economy. However, unlike city governments, the county has a very, very limited ability to directly incentivize or guide economic development. That is the role of the cities. However, Johnson County does play a role in ensuring that our economy and our community is a place where businesses can flourish, and I intend to continue to support those services and the infrastructure, like roads and public safety services, fire services, that make this community a place where businesses want to be. Thank you.
All right. This next question will go to you first, Janay. Describe your views on a balance between the distribution of costs and services between incorporated and unincorporated areas of Johnson County.
Thank you for that question, because I think a lot of people don't realize that although 36% of Johnson County's land area is unincorporated, only about 2.5% of the population actually lives in the unincorporated area. So while the county has to meet our responsibilities in the unincorporated, like fire services and roads, we need to ensure that resources are appropriately designated to services that impact the greatest number of people, including Med Act, that is a countywide service, storm water management, mental health programs, transit, and aging services. So again, while the county is responsible for those services in the unincorporated area, we have to remember only about 2.5% of our population actually lives in rural Johnson County.
Maria?
Well, the unincorporated portion of Johnson County may be quite a bit smaller than the incorporated area, maybe not for long, but we still have a commitment to that area. Resource allocation, it should be based on the land area and the services that are provided, and we have to always be watching for ways to save as we serve. It's interesting, though, that of all the things that my opponent supports, and that she calls herself pro-business, I'm the one sitting up here who's actually owned a business for 25 years and had employees and had to have a budget that I maintained in order to be successful for 25 years. And in the unincorporated area, she doesn't say anything about the sheriff. And those deputies that are out there are what's handling a great deal of what's happening in our unincorporated areas. Right now, we are short 70, maybe more than, I heard between 69 and 77 deputies that were short in Johnson County. Now, I know she has a personal vendetta against the sheriff, but there are deputies out here that are putting their lives on the line with roads that have not been properly maintained, that have truck traffic on them, that are putting the residents out there at risk. We need to make public safety available, and number one, for the entire county, not just for the people that she prefers.
All right. This next question will go to you first, Maria. What do you believe the takeaways for the county commission should be from the COVID-19 pandemic experience?
What an abysmal failure. Government should not be the arbitrator of safety, of personal health decisions through mandates. The county's position was ineffective and highly divisive when we should have been pulling COVID-19 actually brought out the very worst in our commissioners. My opponent, crippled by fear, hid behind a mask deciding who was essential and who was not, while she continued to collect a paycheck from constituents that she put out of work. She robbed our children of a year or more of education. We're just now finding out that the Midwest is behind some of the furthest in the entire The mental anguish that was imposed, how much of that is driving the mental illness and the mental health needs that we have right now? When you cause a problem, and then you vote for increased spending to fix the problem that you caused, and then blame it on the taxpayers. This is beyond irresponsible. This is not how we care for people, and this is not what Johnson County deserves.
All right. Before you start, please, I know that this is, you have opinions about these things, but we're here to hear what they have to say and not what the members of the audience have to say, so please keep your comments to yourself. Janay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. In my experience, the pandemic highlighted the need in Johnson County, and in fact, nationwide and really all over the world, to be better prepared for public health emergencies, and it also highlighted the importance of regional collaboration. Like many communities, Johnson County's Department of Health had to quickly mobilize. They had to hire more staff to be able to provide testing, vaccines, contact tracing, and it's because of that regional collaboration that we were able to get to this point where we're all sitting in a room not wearing masks, and I believe that we need to continue to have to have ongoing investment in our public health services. You know, my opponent talks about masks as something horrible, but if you think back to when COVID, we first heard about COVID, we had no